All right, so you are running for school board C A for the Anchorage School District. And there's been quite a lot happening on national news as well as local news about education, which many people find exciting, but they're also high high interest topics where where people have had lots of questions and things. And some of the stuff that I have seen scrolling through X and Facebook and whatnot has inspired some questions that I think people would be quite interested to learn about your perspective on. And one of them is people talking about Doge and the process of the Department of Government Efficiency going through and cutting waste and all of the things that they represent. And I saw a post, I forget who it was by on X, talking about how they wished that Doge would come to the Anchorage School District. So as far as that goes, you in your platform have talked about being somewhat of a Doge-y individual with how you've cut, what was it, two point something million dollars?
Yeah, two point six million.
Yeah, so what would your, if you were the Department of Doge or whatever you want to call it, what would that look like for the Anchorage School District? And you coming in and taking those principles and values with you into the position?
It's a good one. So I don't know the exact post you're talking about because there's been a few, but the one that jumped in my head, why I smiled like that was by Joel McKinney. So he is the son of Anchorage and he has endorsed me personally and he's a good friend. So he took the, if you look at the debt calculator online, I think we could probably pull that up actually. But if you look at the debt calculator, there's a tab on there that they added for Doge efficiency. So showing how much government waste that's been saved to every taxpayer. So what he did in his smartness was crop a picture of a giant chainsaw in a picture with me where I was actually holding a halibut at the time. But it looks like I'm ready to go take a chainsaw to the school district. So you know, you saw the pictures of Elon Musk and he got that big old chainsaw from, was it Malay? Is that how you pronounce his name?
Milley?
Milley, sorry, yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the Argentine, Argentinian?
Yeah.
President, right?
Yeah, I think it's president. I don't know which one. That's gonna, dang it, that's okay.
Elon Musk, a chainsaw.
Giant, like golden chainsaw because he's going in there and like just ripping things apart, right? And that Elon said he's doing the same thing. And they have confirmed that they've taken too much out at times, but they put it right back in when they realized they made a mistake. So that kind of buzzsaw thing?
That's very much how Elon operates in general.
Right. So I'm not quite that way. It's more methodical. So every single time I went to a different duty station, it was always, not always, first time I moved. Best piece of advice I got one of our, from one of our chiefs was whenever you go to new location, don't just jump in there and try to start dictating things right off the bat because you're going to lose friends right, right off the rip and you're gonna make friends in a bad way. So I'm already good at doing that on my own. I don't need to try to ruffle any feathers that way. So for the two, first two weeks, it'll be probably sitting there just observing, looking at things that I've already seen, being a teacher, lunch lady, P T A parent, any of that. The low hanging fruit is within the first two weeks, you know, stuff that we hear from the trail or parents that they're really concerned about, that's easy. Those are easy tasks to cover while probably learning the whole process and seeing how they do things behind the scenes. But after that, then we can start talking to people, getting ideas. And one thing I like to do most is just go anywhere and ask people, what is the worst thing about your job or this place? And it doesn't matter what it is, like just be honest. What is the absolute worst thing for you? Like it could be personal. So normally what comes with that, like sometimes it's like, I would just like a happy light at my desk, you know? Like, well, that's about a hundred bucks. He's gonna be happy. Might as well do it. No big deal, right? That's, that could be irresponsible spending if we buy everybody a happy light at that point to try to save money per unit, which is what I think the school district does in that sense. But it needs to be focused to each individual person and then teacher, classroom, school, work up from there. And it, it takes looking at the community as well. So if we look at A N C C S, they testified, not testified, but went up and spoke at the last board meeting. The Native Charter School. They're the ones essentially competing with Rokosula for Lakewood Elementary for that whole deal. But yeah, they were talking about that and I lost my train of thought completely. Yeah, can you bring me back to where I was on that one?
You were talking about it's not a good idea to go buy everybody a happy light and that the Anchorage School District has a
I don't know, there's probably going nowhere. I don't know. Oh, responsible spending targeted, right? So as long as we're not doing things like just increasing the B S A a thousand dollars and actually looking at what each individual school needs, that's what we need to do. But starting at that basic, get to know people, see how things run. Don't try to just go, go at it with a chainsaw. But essentially that's going to be the results though. It's going to be like big chainsaw type results that will change our education for generations. That's what I see.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is that you are willing and capable of coming in and making cuts as in when and where they're necessary. But you want to be conscientious of making the right cuts in the right place for the right reasons.
Right, not just making cuts to make cuts. So one example of that is the right sizing that they're talking about, saying we have to cut five schools or seven schools, whatever it was. That's what they just came out with. And I feel like a lot of things that come out of the district are just ballpark numbers and they see what sticks at that point. And bring it back to the B S A again, they're just pulling a thousand dollar increase out of thin air. There is some math to it, but that specific number, nobody can actually say why it's that specific number. And that's a problem to me.
Okay, so you're not just looking for numbers, but you're actually losing, looking, not losing, sorry, looking for justification to be attached to those numbers.
They have to be accurate and relevant. So I'm not looking for data picked points on any of it because that's, you can skew any data to make it look at how, how you want it. So it's a really important thing to look at and I think our school board doesn't do it often enough. They try to ask the right questions, but they're also, I feel fed those questions. And I feel like the whole rigmarole up there is just that, like just a show.
Okay, so obviously you're not, you haven't been voted in yet and you're kind of going for, you know, the seat and the election is coming up. Paper ballots go out on the eleventh and they're due back by, the first is the postmark date?
They have to be postmarked by that day. So you might as well just go into a voting location that day because you still can vote the last day. But if you're anywhere outside of Alaska, it has to be postmarked that day.
Okay, so they do have in-person voting on the first?
Yeah, it's not being that well advertised because they want everybody to get the, get out the vote quick or earlier. We saw that back in twenty twenty-two, I believe, with Nick Begich, Sarah Palin and Kelly Shabaka, I believe, was the third, right? Those three? And that's where the push was, get out your mailboat or get your ballots in, mail it in, vote red down the ballot. So it was a whole marketing thing from both sides. But now both sides are still saying the same thing, but they're not letting people know as much to go in person the day of. Because they also know that the left shows up always and both. And so the right is kind of confused on what they're gonna do this time. Do they say show up in person or do they say just do mail? Nobody's really saying. So it's all the political game that way. Sorry, it works in my head, but it's all, it's all marketing and this type game, yeah.
Really is all politics are is who can, who can be the greatest spin master?
Yeah.
But that kind of leads me to my next question, which is even over the last, I would say even the last like one to three years, there's been significant changes and, and developments in technologies that we have available to us for tracking things like spending and where, where money is coming and going and what it's being used for and being able to really hone in on data and numbers in a way that we really haven't been able to, I think, until very recently. So have you given any thought to any sort of modern, like upgrades in terms of modern technologies that you would be interested in bringing in to the school district to help with some of these administrative budgeting issues? Because I know Alaska is a big state, Anchorage is a big municipality, there's, there's you can, you know, the numbers better than I do about the, the numbers of schools and classrooms and, you know, students and all of that. And so I would envision that as, as a person in technology myself, that bringing in some of these tools and modernizing even the backend of how administration in schools works and functions, there would be space for cutting some unnecessary positions that, that are causing blow and overhead. And then also being able to have an even greater insight into getting the, the more specific numbers that you were talking about before about like, well, why do you have this number? What's your justification for it? So I know it's kind of a meandering question, but I would love to hear your thoughts and I think other people would too.
Yeah, so the, that made me immediately think of the administration, right? Because it's just each, each individual position on, on that side of things. So that, any kind of technology is going to help them operate more efficiently. So it's not just the budget or where the money goes that should help out. I don't know what tools they have their, their disposal yet. But that one would be a big one. Financial accounting piece, while getting my M B A, was my most hated class. Hated it with a passion. So when I look at a budget now, I'm like, oh, this hurts. But in all my years of being a resource advisor, I was trying to hone in on those same points. So a resource advisor in the military is assigned by the commander and then you let the commander know what they can or cannot buy legally and then let them know what they have as a budget and then you do all of it. So it's a CFO, right?
Basically like a, a financial, yeah, CFO, yeah.
Yeah. So just looking at that alone, I wish that there was some kind of program that I could just put everything into and then get the data out based off of certain topics. So if you look at the school board meetings, like they kind of go over the financials, but there's no transparency of where it could be going mismanagement wise or misappropriated wise.
Right.
Does that make sense maybe?
Yeah.
To answer the question?
I think so.
I think just, there was just that one area, right? But every single area has ways of cutting waste. So like a very easy example is where in the building should you place the one main copier to benefit all teachers? Go and go as deep as seeing how many steps that every single teacher, teacher has to take. So it goes really in depth, breaking things down to the very smallest level and then finding any single waste point, I guess. So if we can save one teacher ten steps a year, we're gonna still do that. It might not be noticeable, but you do that across the whole district, it can be big.
The compounded impact that is significant. And I think like I'm, I'm a huge, personally, I'm a huge proponent of like improvements and taking efficiency measures. But I feel like in, in many organizations and just, I mean, with all, you know, my travels all around the world and stuff is that you, it's very hard to come in with a sledgehammer and, and some change. You have to facilitate, you have to create a space to facilitate change incrementally and you have to actually steer people to a place where they're willing to come with you and step into the changes that you're trying to implement.
Because most of the time going into a new place, eighty percent of the people there aren't gonna agree with you, just right off the rip. It's, it's normal. So that's why I, I like to just go somewhere new, watch for two weeks, feel things out because I'm not, not an aggressive person, you know? I have my opinions, but I keep them to myself. Especially in a professional setting because I, I know I'm not always going to be the smartest person, person in the room until I can prove it. So, yeah.
I understand that as well. I, I definitely live that philosophy.
Yeah, good.
One percent incremental improvements that actually make the biggest impact over time.
Yeah.
Is you're able to sustain them, so. Yeah, that's good. I think, I think this is something that a lot of people will be interested in hearing about and it's not something, in my opinion, that I've heard really anyone talking about.
I don't think anybody's asked me that yet, like specifically how would that, or what would that look like? I don't, nobody's asked me any like targeted small question like that, I don't think.
No, but I feel like these are the questions you should really be asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like good, good questions, I like them.
Make the mechanics of how things function better, which is going to impact how everything functions better. And you know, there was, oh, so here's another one. I know that this is a big
One more real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Five minutes.
Okay, oh, last question, okay, one question. So, so recently President Trump made some waves. I mean, it's not like he's ever not making waves, but in very Trump fashion, he made a big splash in the country specifically for the faith-based community. And as a person of faith that has put footsteps to that over my life, this is something that's actually quite important to me as someone that votes in elections and especially in the U S. And really, I believe for a lot of people from faith-based communities, it's kind of a plum line and it's important to talk about and not be avoided. And I don't feel like this is something that's been avoided, but I don't, I also feel like this is a question that hasn't really been presented or talked about to you in, in an overtly direct way. So President Trump quote, when he was talking about, I believe it was in the context of signing, was it an executive order or something?
I know, he's done so many, so I'm like getting excited now, like which one are you gonna talk about? Like which one?
I'll have to go back and do some research and come back to you on which one it was that he was doing when he said this quote. But his quote was, and it's all over the internet. He said, our message to every child in America is that you are perfect exactly the way God made you. And that was, I think that went out last, last week, actually, like early this week, like on the third or fourth. And so I wanted to ask you about that. I do know from previous conversations with you that, that you, you do have a faith and that that's something that you're, you know, working out as you go, as we all do by the day. So would you like to make any comments on this?
When I heard that, pretty much it was the same. So he was, he was telling Congress to immediately pass a law. I think it was like that inflection, immediately pass a law. Or he's gonna sign executive action to fix that. And when he mentioned that kids are beautiful the way they are, just the way God made them. I can't even. I'm trying to talk, I'm trying. Because yes, they are. Every single one. I don't care if any other adults tries to throw any poop at me for anything I've said. So every single life is precious. And I remember seeing that every single day when I was at a school in the morning was the greatest moment every day. Because every kid would show up, doesn't matter if, uh, doesn't matter where they're from. Doesn't matter what they look like. It doesn't even matter if they can hear you or not. When that kid shows up in the morning, you smile and say, good morning. And you end up saying it at least a hundred times. And every single one of those kids are lifted up just that little bit. And every single one of them, I can still see all their faces and I, I still love it. That's my favorite part of this world. So, yeah. When he said that, I was like, yes, you are, you are right now banning trans kids because it's not possible. They're way too beautiful to be confused like that. That's all it is. And anybody that wants to hurt any one of them. Sorry, Gracie. There are a lot of different thoughts about what should happen to people that hurt children. I am a father. I've been to war. I've seen the worst. I am willing to do worse if anybody wants to hurt my child. And I think I'd do the same for anybody else's child. Regardless, if they're any of the L G B T Q field because it's, they're still a human. Or anything, any race, religion, any of it, they're kids. Adults are a different story and we can have words, but kids are kids. They need to stay that way. Yeah. Hopefully that quells that question. Hopefully.
You know, I think, I mean, I, I personally haven't been to war, but I've been to some very intense places on the planet and one of them was in Kurdistan in northern Iraq when, in, in twenty fourteen, when the ISIS situation exploded and the team that I was with was there literally the morning of. And so we went to sleep, waking, expecting to wake up to go and work in Syrian refugee camps. And instead we woke up to thousands, hundreds, thousands of traumatized Iraqis who had been driven out of their villages and homes overnight because ISIS was, was coming to do very bad things to them or force them to leave. And I, on our team, our aid, aid team that I was with, I was the designated photographer at that time as, and well as doing other things. But part of my job was documenting our work and some of the most powerful images that I was able to walk away from in that time were the images of the children. And it wasn't in a context of just exploitation, but being able to make pictures of them and document.
I actually have some. I don't know if I told you that.
I don't think
I have some pictures, so in Afghanistan, we went, we were able to go off, off the post there. And they, they were doing it like once a quarter where they would take clothes, toys and stuff for the kids out in the communities. So we got to go out the gate and do all that fun stuff. But like one of the little dudes there took my watch.
Oh, you did tell me about him.
That part, but there was all the little kids in this little like communal area and just this one little girl, like she was just straight terrified of us, which like understandable. But once she kind of warmed up a little bit, the first person she stood next to was me out of everybody. And I was standing there, like I was not engaging at all. Like I was like, no, this is like, this is, this is weird to me. Like I'm just sitting back watching, like I'll just be the protector here. And this little girl stood right next to me, looking all, like she had makeup, like way too much makeup. They were trying to make her look pretty, like, like it was a straight five-year-old with clown makeup. I, I have a picture of her, but yeah, she stood right next to me.
I think kids instinctively know who the people are in the room.
Yeah, it's always like that, always. I can just be quiet, standing in the corner like I do, back against the wall. Or watching my kids play soccer like I do every week and there's always some little kid that ends up right next to me and I'm, I don't know. Just looking at me, I'm pretty standoffish, but kids don't see it that way. Kids are like, you're awesome. I was like, heck yeah, I am. Let's go, let's go play. You wanna go, wanna go on the playground? I'll watch, like things will be fine. Watch you fall on your head, you know, put some dirt on it, things will be fine.
That sounds awesome.
Yeah.
It's, it's a privilege, I think, to be able to work with children. And it's, it's an honor and I don't think people really understand the, the magnitude of, of what that is to be able to do that.
Yeah, if I could do it every day for the rest of my life, I'd do it for free. And that's why I'm doing this. Because I don't think there's anybody else in Anchorage that would do this job for free like I would. Not a single one, especially go through all this, all this hate. It is what it is. Doesn't bother me, or it does bother me a lot actually, but it's okay, it's worth it.
Do we have time for one more question?
I, yeah, I guess so. For you, sure.
Okay, I'm gonna get quick.
It's okay. The last one was quick, it was ten minutes. I'm just giving you a hard time now. That was good.
Okay, so this was, this was one that I think is really important and it's very timely. There's a lot of concerns right now that I've heard about and I've seen on, on the digital, all the channels, right? Because that's part of what I do. And, you know, there's been a lot of concern about just school safety. There's been a lot of talk about children being bullied. There's been a lot of talk about fighting in school, about kids being afraid to go to school and different things like that. And I find it interesting that this is one of your, your key platforms that you're running on is about school safety.
It's my number one, yes.
Your number one, but I find it interesting that in the midst of you running on this campaign, you've actually experienced some of, in my opinion, aside from probably President Trump himself. And I'm, I don't feel like I'm exaggerating from this, although again, I'm, I'm not as well-versed in U S politics as, as many other people are. But in my experience and involvement and just general sense of paying attention to this, this, I feel like you have experienced real time, some of the most intense, intense bullying and online and in person, actually harassment and just vicious, vitriol that I think I've probably ever seen. Aside from one other experience that had nothing to do with people and it was more about an activity that people were engaged in. And so being someone that has experienced this level of bullying and harassment and all of these things, like you're really truly walking into this being like, oh, no, no, I understand what this feels like. So carrying this experience with you that has been so horrific and so negative, what do you, have you given any thought to how you would carry this experience in to, to the school district if you're elected to seat A? And turn this around for good because I personally believe that there's, it, it can be one of the most powerful tools that you carry forward with you in terms of making an impact on the environment that our, our children have to go to school in. And I say this myself as an alumni of the Anchorage School District. My kind, my entirety of my school year, like school experience was in the Anchorage School District. And it, it grieves me deeply to know that our schools are in such a sorry state right now.
Yeah, they are. I was starting to think about what I actually heard inside of schools recently. I was gonna bring it back to that and then lost my train of thought in the beginning, but it's the same thing. People are just bullying to try to get a rise out of you. And, you know, we go back to, there's that other video out there of certain people bringing things up and me backing down or whatnot. This is all new to me. I don't know where things are coming from, the same way in Afghanistan, you know? We don't know where the mortars are coming from. We don't know where the fire is coming from. I worked on airplanes. I wore headphones the whole time, so I couldn't hear for the majority of my time there. So I somewhat understand the fear of the deaf community because you don't know where those attacks are coming from. The same thing happens online because I don't even know half the stuff that's being said right now. The only thing I can do is control what, control what I can control. And unfortunately, I have to tell my And unfortunately, I have to tell my kids the same thing. Now. Have to tell them, people are gonna say mean things. Don't let it bother you. Watch dad, I'll show you. Let kids say whatever they wanna say. They'll get tired, they'll go away. It always happens. So. Uh, how does it get to that bullying part? There's way too many lax policies and teachers are not being supported properly. And what they can do or can't do in the school district. Or just in general with the kids. So as I went to the, a band concert uh, last week, last Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday. And just listening to the talk of the sixth graders. It is way worse than anything I have posted on any of my accounts ever in my life. Worse, coming from a sixth grader at my child's middle school. With an adult within earshot that hears these things. And then was like, ooh, don't say that, and that's it. No repercussions, no come with me, nothing. If it was me as that teacher, I'd be like, you just lost your chance on getting all the points from this band concert. And we're gonna talk to the principal about being expelled. Like, it's that bad. I would love to say it, but I would probably put this on YouTube. You know, um, it's that bad. So anybody that wants to come at me for any mean tweets or what did I mean by this tweet? No, our kids, not all of our kids, some kids are saying much, much worse in the schools. And teachers, parents aren't doing anything about it, mostly because we don't know. And how do we know? We would know if the Stop It app was being reported to parents. Like, I don't even know if you know that one. If there's an app out there that, you know, kids or parents can go report bullying and all that stuff. Or just hear um, mention things that kids are saying. But even the principal confirmed that not everything actually makes it to the report uh, to the district, so.
That's pretty standard, I think, anytime you're dealing with abuse, is it? Verbal, emotional, financial or like very little of it actually gets reported officially.
Right, because they wanna protect both kids, as they should, you know, because kids are gonna be dumb, right? But when I hear over a month ago, these same terms are being mentioned at school. And then a month after, like I go to the school and I hear those same phrases. Like there's an, like proof right there, like they're not doing what they need to. And I don't think it's the fault of the teachers or who's working. It's policy, it's above their heads, they can't do anything about it. Because if they do, they lose their job, they lose their pension.
What we're dealing with these days is actually more systemic than anything else and that it's just been hardwired into the systems. To the point that it it's almost like a, a noose around people's necks and they have no ability to maneuver.
Yeah, but then we do, we're gonna do the same things with our kids with the Anchorage Academy. You know, build them up to eighteen years old and they can only go into one job or one sector. You know, how does that set them up for success in their human life? Like keeping them capped to An- to Anchorage, just because we want to provide a service to. What the, the indu- industry, the like construction, the labors, right?
I would say that that's almost like a fear-based education.
Right, well, yeah, yeah.
If if we don't, and I'm not saying it from the children's side, but from the people, you know, the the higher ups. We're having all of these people leave the state or whatever, or we gotta do something, what can we do to keep them? And it's like taking a parrot or something and saying, well, we won't have you, but we'll clip your wings so you can't ever fly.
Yeah, but parrot will still work out well, like, it'll be great. It'll just never know any better. So, and that's, that's what kinda sucks about caring so much about people, is I want the world for every single one. So that's where the conflict is in me. I want the world for every single child, but we can't. So I think that's a good problem to have going into the, the race, or the, actually winning the race and going on the board. I think.
But I think some of the most intelligent people on the planet that I've ever met have been able to hold space for what seems like two conflicting ideas at the same time. And through the process of finding a way to make, to make the ends meet in the middle. So that you're, you're getting the the best possible outcomes from all sides of it. And not just putting it in the balance of one or the other for the sake of pleasing or. Um, pandering to any one particular group, but saying, no, we have to, we have to solve the problem instead of the Band-Aid solutions on it.
Yeah, that's one of the the biggest uh, points of learning for me during this campaign. Is you go into politics or jump into something like this, everybody tries to make you pick a one side or the other. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not. You know, I look at the, yeah, I helped out Jared with the, his campaign over the summer, right? But I then see how things are done on the right and then on the left. And I'm like, I'm different than both. So where do I go now? Like, nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna be like, well, go to the left then. No, I don't think I'm there either. I think I'm right in the middle. I care about people, you know, I love my country, served it honorably. You know, got all decorated for wearing my headphones places and not dying, pretty much. But, you know, I'm here to make an improvement and I think we can. Uh, looks like probably two years is what I'm guessing. Within two years, we'll be within the top ten in the country. That's what I see.
Well, that makes me happy here, because when I graduated, our schools were in the top ten. And to to be learning now, all these years later, that we've somehow lost that crown. If you wanna put it that way, and our autumn, it's, it's absolutely incomprehensible and horrific to me. Um, and I I don't know, like, you know, I was born and raised here, we've talked about that before. And um, just those of us that that were born and raised here and have gone through the school system, kindergarten through twelve. And and, you know, in in my, you know, Gen X in my age group. That it's, it's incomprehensible to me that that we've gone from way up here to all the way down here. And something, it it cannot continue to be like that, it just absolutely can't. And so I think, actually, wh- what I'm hearing you say is that, you know, by neither being all the way on the left or all the way on the right. But somewhere in the middle, which, you know, it just makes me think that you were just designed to be a disruptor of the system. And I think that one of the things that our country on all levels, from the national to the hyper-local. Needs right now is people who are willing to put their hat in the ring. And um, so you know what, I'm I'm willing to disrupt and disturb this status quo so that we can actually get this massive ship. To to be on course in the way that it always should have been in the first place. And I think the reason some of us, including myself, don't ever really fit in any one group or another. Is because we were never designed to. And that we're always set apart and set aside for things just like this. And in faith-based circles, there's this saying that says like for such a time as this, and it comes out of the book of Esther. And um, if you haven't come like dug into that story yet, it's, and I would encourage you to do it. Um, but it it talks about Esther being positioned for a very unique moment in time. That was very pivotal and it was, it was very much um, a a course-turning event. And if certain decisions were made, certain things were gonna happen. And if certain decisions weren't made, certain other things were gonna happen. And it was very much a, no, 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 this is a precipice and we have to change direction now. Or or, or it's not going to be good for us moving forward. And I feel very much that about just the collective future of Alaska. But also the um, long-term reality of the fact that many of these kids. Grad- who graduate from the school system will actually end up staying and spending their whole lives in the state. Not all of them, but many of them will. And we need collectively, whether we have children in the system or not, and I don't have kids, but I'm invested in this. Because I have a lifetime invested in in career-wise with education and um, training and equipping people. And it's one of the most important things we can do collectively is to give children the best possible chance moving forward of of actually having a success. When already being born up here by default kind of puts you behind the curve in so many ways. Not because we're not capable, but because Alaska is just so different and set apart from so much of the rest of the country. As well as the rest of the world. We are a unicorn state, in my opinion. And because of that, we cannot do things, including our education, the same way as the rest of the country does. Or the rest of everybody else from anywhere does. We have to do it in a way that's customized to what we need here. And for the reasons that we need it, not because some people from outside tell us that that's how we should do it. Because it works over there, so.
You heard what made me think of? The reason? Well, you already said it. You grew up here, K through twelve. This is your home, because you're invested. Top ten in the nation, you wanted to be here, you care about it. This is yours, that you're invested. Every single community has the same thing. We need to make sure that the kids, the parents are all invested and we're all together. Because that will keep our families here. It's not some job, it's not money, it's not fame. It's the community that will keep our families here. So we need to get our dads involved, get our moms involved. Everybody, so, and connect every single group as well as the big one. Because our community councils should be talking to our churches, to our business owners, to our schools. All of it needs to be connected and we're missing that mark. That's why people are leaving. It's not because of the money or any of the other tangibles. If you have a tie to Alaska, you are here no matter what. That's why we see people that are always Alaskans and that's why. It's not any of the other crap, so. Is that good? Is that a good tie-in?
That's good. I think, I think, I know you have to go. So I do too, so.
Gonna go learn some, some Bible stuff.
And um, I guess we'll do this again, yeah?
Yes, looking forward to it. Thank you.